To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any correction or approval in the minutes from February 12th and February 26th meeting? I look up at the minutes.
We need a motion for both. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Day of next meeting, I guess that's the right date, 4/8?
Okay.
Can we do that? Okay. Correspondence?
Nothing to my knowledge.
Okay. Director for the board?
Just wanted to make sure to highlight, because we've been getting a lot of questions about it. You can see all of our normal statistics, very good, happy about that. We tied meeting room use last month to this month, so it's picking up even more, so it's maintaining at a high level, which this is normally our quiet season. So the fact that we're at 52 meeting room uses for January and February, when it's not even, I mean, normally this is the quietest time we have all year, so I'm very excited about what that means going into the summer. Oh, okay. I just realized, the day I did this was when we had that big Facebook outage, so I wasn't able to get our Facebooks, Instagram, all of our numbers, but I'll make sure I fix that. Very happy with all of our program attendance. In terms of Hoopla, I just want to make sure everyone is aware, because we've already been getting some people calling us about it, to make sure the budget lasts for the rest of the year. I am going out the door, and you can blame me for this, other anybody calls, it's George's fault, I put in two new restrictions on Hoopla, which is our most popular ebook and audiobook usage service. The way that Hoopla works is it's a pay-per-use model, so every time you check out a book from Hoopla, depending on the book, there's a dollar value to it, so to make sure we have enough in the account to make the rest of the year, we just put in two new restrictions of, one, spending no more than $500 a month, which this last month we spent, I think it was close to $870, so...
So what happened, when you hit the 500, you can't use Hoopla? When you, the library hits the 500?
And so what they do is they prorate it backwards. So let's say $500, they go and they average that out by however many days there are per month, to try to make sure everyone gets a chance to check out a book potentially, instead of having like three or four people blow the entire budget for the entire library in the first, you know, two days of the month. We're already having people call, because this is a brand-new thing, and they're used to checking out, you know, their five books, and then so many people are calling, because some authors that they were reading aren't there anymore. And the second reason for that is because, at the advice of our rep with Hoopla, they suggested we also put in a cap in the maximum value of the item in Hoopla, which was another thing that we did. So there's a lot of stuff where, like, "Oh, I was just reading this series," and they're all gone, all of a sudden, it's like, "Well, it's because it's more expensive, those book titles."
So do you then suggest that the book is in print and come and get it?
It's in print. Most of those are also available in Libby, which is a completely different model, as pay-for-access. So we pay for Libby through a consortium of all the libraries in the Sales Library Network. Hoopla is something we individually contract for, so it's a different...
Are we moving, is your hoopla?
No. Hoopla is very popular, people love it, and it has material in it that is not in Libby, and also the fact that you don't ever have a waitlist in Hoopla, because if it's in there, you can always check it out, no matter how many other hoopla. It's definitely a both-and situation, it's just the amount of money we're spending on Hoopla is not a bad thing, it still saves us money over, especially with the audiobooks. So for, in Hoopla, the most expensive audiobook they have is $4.99 for one checkout. If we bought that on CD, it could be anywhere from $50 to literally $300, depending on the publisher.
But it's $4.99, excuse me, every time, right?
Correct.
So if you owned it for 15 or 50, or whatever the number you just said was, that could be reused, right?
Assuming somebody checks it out. And that's where you're playing the numbers game of, well, here's a very popular author, we'll get this one up for this, knowing that people will check it out, but the good thing about Hoopla is because of that pay-at-use model, if somebody is looking for something particular, it's there for them, we don't necessarily have to buy it and not use it. So it depends on how much money we want to spend on Hoopla going forward, which that depends on how much money we want to put towards the print budget. So to kind of temporarily kick the can down the road, that's, there is a bill in the stack going around that'll put 3,500 into Hoopla for the remainder of the year, however long that lasts. At 500 a month, definitely will carry you through to FY '25.
Are you able to tell how many patrons use Hoopla?
I don't know if I get a count on how many people, we do get a count on how many items, so I guess I could work backwards. We wouldn't know if everyone used all of their checkouts, and every month there are some checkouts that don't count against the five-item limit. We could try to roughly guess, game it out that way. I might be able to run a report and see how many people are using it, but it's...
So March is full, but April starts again.
March is not full, March is just, right now, basically, everybody already spent a week of the budget in the first three days, which is why we put the restriction, to make sure we, try to make the money last as long as we do. And then the staff, we've already been talking, and we've been already having people start to, start using Libby more, so that's the next game, trying to even it out, so that people do use Libby and not just, just use Hoopla.
Do they receive that warmly, that information?
It's a curve, it's a learning curve, we're working on it.
I got a phone call this morning.
You did? And you're on Hoopla?
Yes. Can you find out why the staff won't let us use Hoopla?
So there's a lot of people who only use Hoopla because there aren't waitlists, so because you don't have to put on a hold, because Libby's in there, you can instantly take it out. You know, it's 2024, a lot of people are used to the Netflix model of, if I want to watch something, I want to watch something now, and having to wait, having to, you know, have it come in at a later date, it's becoming a foreign concept. So a lot of people do like Hoopla, Hoopla is great because of that, it does have stuff that is not available in Libby, and that's the really good thing about having both of them. But Hoopla does have a budget creep, because, you know, people love it and people check a lot of stuff out. When I left Plymouth, we were spending, I think it was close to $2,000 a month on Hoopla. Obviously, that's a bigger town. When my friend left Plymouth two years later, it had grown to closer to five.
And I think mostly books, does that include movies?
It's, so Hoopla has pretty much everything. So Hoopla has ebooks, audiobooks, some magazines, comic books, music albums, TV shows, movies, it's almost everything that's available in a digital format. So it does have a lot of use, and the good thing about Hoopla is it's all in the one app, that you can use on a phone, or a computer, or with the video, you can even put it on your TV. So it's a lot of versatility in one place, whereas with Libby, in order to compete with Hoopla, Overdrive, the company that owns Libby, went and bought Canopy to add video to their company's capabilities, but they still have it in two different apps. So here's a trade-off.
So your experience tells you that this is going to continue to increase?
Well, that's the thing, because we had it basically open, and while it was like $500, $600, it was like, okay, we can handle this every month, but last month it went up to, what did I say?
It was $700.
$864. So I mean, at that point, it's like, it can be sustainable, if we prioritize Hoopla with the digital services, but...
Where does the money come from for that account?
That account usually is the last fund for technology.
So if the people who would get three or four books at the beginning of the month have to wait, they'll still get their books without too much trouble later on in the month, or not true?
They can't, well, it depends. So basically, because of that average out, people could still check out all five items if they wanted to on day one, depending on how much value they were. So if you, you know, if one person got, you know, times two is 10. So basically, each individual person now can max out around $10 total value of checkouts per month. So if you wanted them to check out, you know, one book one week, two books the next week, one, you know, CD the next week, you can still spread it out more that way, otherwise people were spending, could have spent, you know, $25 or $50 per person.
Do people know that there's a dollar value to their...
No. That's on our side then? So it's kind of more communicating with people more about the service, because on their side, they just, you know, log into it and then they check out the items.
Right, 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 right. But if you knew it cost the library...
But you do know, unless we go and manually check each item, what the value of each item is. So that's why it's, you know...
You know that guilt thing, like you're costing us money, are you sure you're going to use it?
I mean, I'm not going to tell you what library I use for Hoopla, because it's a former employer of mine that never turned off my library card, so...
So you're not costing them less, but, oh, you're in the bedroom?
Unless you say it's no town I've ever lived in, I'll leave it at that.
Well, folks could get Boston Public Library e-card.
They actually restricted their Hoopla access for out-of-town folk, because they were spending so much money every month as well, so you can...
But it's still available.
I still have one.
Yes, you can, it's just they have restricted some dollar values and some resources, depending on if you are a legitimate full Boston resident versus a Commonwealth resident. So they have a tiered category for their access now, because they were just burning tens of thousands of dollars every month.
So Hoopla sounds a little bit like a cable TV company, like they're kind of in charge.
They were trying a different model access, so that's Hoopla. Compare that to Libby. With Libby, we pay for a package of books, right? And then within that, if we want to buy additional copies, if you want to think about it that way, Libby works a lot like a regular library, the stacks come pre-filled. If you want to buy additional copies of books, you have to pay per license, and each of those licenses have a certain time period that they last for, and a certain number of checkouts.
So the license is for the book?
For the book, for the title, put it that way. And once either the time period gets filled up, or whatever that number of checkouts takes place, you have to repurchase that title at full value. There's no markdown for subsequent usage. And then, depending on the book, that is literally anywhere from $5, $10, $20, up to $300. So that's where it gets tricky, that's why a lot of the audiobooks we have, we might only literally have one digital copy for the audiobook in Libby, because it can be hundreds of dollars. I know when the newest Stephen King book came out, it had a long waitlist, because for the first six, six or eight months that that book was out, if we wanted to buy an extra copy, the publisher was literally charging us $300 bucks. So, and some of the publishers in Libby will not even buy, won't even sell to libraries, so that's also, some of them have blackout lists, where for six months to a year, they won't even allow us to buy the titles, to give the business to Amazon or to a bookstore. So there's like blackout dates, which is why Hoopla comes in, and it's a different model, so usually they can get around some of that. So it is popular, it has usage, it's just a matter of how much money we want to put into it, and not towards other books, so...
How much did this cost us in 2023?
As of right now, we...
Twenty-three, last year.
Last year?
Yeah.
I think it was around five or six grand for the year. So I had budgeted for about the same amount, which, because of the restriction, will keep within that budget, but otherwise, we probably would have spent over it. But it depends, because, I mean, its usage is high, people like the resources, so it's a matter of, is it worth it to put money towards it and not towards the print collection, or some other resource that we have available?
I think that the dangerous route is starting limiting print books to go down.
It's something that we've always had to do, just because of, you know, there are people who only use digital resources, they don't come into the library, so it's a matter of trying to find that balance between serving people who only want to read print versus people who only want to read digital.
I promised my last question.
Sure.
Is, how long has Hoopla been part of the service here?
I think it's right, right around the time I came on, give or take, do you guys have a before that?
I think we had it...
I thought we got it right when COVID started?
COVID started, yeah, that makes sense.
I think so.
Canopy, Canopy was started when I came, that's what it was, yeah. So give or take, four or five years. But, so we'll kick that can down the road. Yep, and then also, it's taken us three years, I do not know how many phone calls, I do not know how many emails, but we got the dang State Park pass back. So DCR finally got us the pass for Massachusetts cars to be able to go to state properties, à la Horstec. Has this been a fight?
Is it a one-car pass?
We actually have two one-car passes.
So daily use kind of thing?
Yes. Bonnie can't use it.
I can do it, I'll get it.
It's okay. But yeah, I cannot tell you...
You can use my car, Bonnie.
The number of emails and phone calls and people I've hunted to try and get that pass back, because it's been a whole thing.
How do we put that pass out to people?
We have it available, just like all the other museum passes, so there's a barcode, you scan it, you check it out, you bring it back, drop it either at the front desk or in the book drop, so we're just happy that it finally came.
Is it a one-day thing?
Yeah, yeah, so it's one, each day is used for that day, so, very happy. And then that one is... Okay. And then we have officially been put on the town's capital improvement plan for FY either '27 or '28, can't remember off the top of my head, to have our HVAC replaced, so it's on paper, it's happening. The town is currently participating in a energy efficiency grant program, in which there's been a vendor that selected, basically, for the next five years to do a bunch of different projects for the town to improve energy efficiency. So because of that, they will actually be able to do the entire HVAC replacement project as part of the grant, without needing to put it out to bid, if you select to go with them. That's not, it's very preliminary, they don't have any plans yet on what they replace what we have with, but...
But the town does have to put up some money.
Well, that's the thing, so going through the grant, that'll take care of most of it, I don't know if it'll be the entire project, but there's serious money in the grant to redo, you know, almost all the stuff in a lot of the buildings.
Put split ducts in someone's homes right now, it's $10,000, home owners, there's a lot of money out there.
But MassSave is very generous.
Well, this is a whole separate program for MassSave, so this is something that's...
The presidential, I don't even know if MassSave does...
Yeah, it's a nonprofit town.
Yeah, so there's a lot of money there, and so the vendor came by to just take a preliminary look at all the town buildings, which included us. So that did take place, so keep your eyes open for that.
I would have some question, whether the town's going to be able to afford it, even if there's a lot of money available, the town still has to come up with so much.
When they did this addition, did this get in charge?
It's aging, though, it didn't do the individual's useful life.
As of right now, the, basically, there's four units, the biggest of which was replaced in 2005, the other two were done in 2008, I think, off the top of my head, and they all basically were engineered with a 15-year lifespan, so we're getting towards the end at this point for all of them. So hopefully, when we move over and get everything replaced, we'll be able to get, you know, higher efficiency, less consumption, that'll help keep the electrical bill down to, is the dream.
Just for your permission to that, the capital approval plan, they get that money from what's left over from other budgets at the end of the year. So whatever's left over, they throw into that capital approval plan, and that's where they spend that money.
They have been talking about trying to change that model, but that is how it is right now, that is correct. Just want to make sure we highlight that stuff.
A motion to accept?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion? Second was?
I don't think anybody, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bonnie?
I don't have anything to add.
We need a motion to accept Bonnie's report?
I'll move. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Friends update. The meetings this Thursday, right?
Meetings this Thursday, yeah. And the Friends will be hosting a party to celebrate George, I want everyone to know, this coming Monday, six to seven thirty, a week from today.
It's not a surprise, George.
It was a little bit of a surprise.
Sue told me she spoke with you, that's why I felt free to...
Sue told me that she was going to call some people and double-check the date, so I wasn't, I had not been told it was definitely happening on the Monday, so it was a little bit of a confirmation surprise, because I've been out the last couple days.
Because it's got to be Monday or Thursday.
Yeah, which is fine, I know Thursdays don't work for everybody as much, so, it's cool. I've got something every Monday for the next few weeks.
Trustee subcommittee update.
Director search, I've been getting applications through Indeed, mostly unqualified, which Denise at the Select Board told me would happen, she said ignore them, I said, she said she would review it, and I said, no, that's okay, I'll review it, and mostly it's been red Xs, red Xs, people without college degrees or whatever, because the town uses the free model of Indeed, and there is no good filtering of the applicants with that, so it is what it is. And then I've gotten one or two applications through, I believe, the Board of Library Commissioners website, and it's also posted on Jobline, and there's one other library website.
Do you have any qualified yet?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, at least one, maybe one and a half. It looked promising, but I didn't have time to review it before I left for this meeting. And the committee is meeting a week from today, right?
Yes, yeah, the 18th, yeah, the 18th.
The 18th, yeah.
Do we tell anybody, do we have to have permission to use that room?
Just let us check, because if anyone else already has a book, and I would be the only one, because some people do reserve them all the time.
You said 10 o'clock? Did we say 10 o'clock, Monday, 18?
Hey, then we definitely don't let people know, let you guys...
Oh, wait, it's the 19th, I apologize, it's Tuesday, the 19th, 10 o'clock.
That's right. It's...
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Can you reserve a corner for us somewhere?
Tuesday...
Maybe in the book sorting room?
At 10?
At 10, yeah.
Stick in the boiler room.
That's standing in the room.
There's the little table in there, he can scoot around.
Broom closet.
Do we have to have motions on the subcommittee?
No.
Safety, safety, I'll give a brief update, we have, I have two contractors coming to look at that front door for the automatic opening, and I've contacted our alarm guy for security things for that door, so we can shut the lock it from inside if we have to. So when those guys look at it, we'll review whatever they put together.
When are they coming?
Don't have dates yet. I have email confirmation that they're going to come, not a date.
All the managers nowadays are getting crazy, like I had, I had family heating come over and try and get a quote for the exhaust fan project we were talking about, and they gave me a quote for putting in two exhaust fans in each of the bathrooms, so I asked them to redo the quote to have it just on the one, and I just haven't gotten it back yet, and that was a month ago.
Is that general?
Well, that's the family heating.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, so, I keep meaning to call them back, but we've got so much other stuff going on.
We called them to get, because I have a control system, and it's getting old, so it's starting to leak, so it has to be replaced, so I called them after the last meeting, and they still haven't come either.
Everybody's like, they backed up, because so many people doing service and stuff on the house is not...
At the Westport Credit Union, they've been looking for a part-time accountant for almost a year and a half, and they've given up on Indeed, that's what they're trying to do. New business. Hope to appoint Bonnie interim library director effective Sunday, March 30th.
Can we have a motion?
I move.
Motion?
I second.
And just to use the wording here?
Yeah, and then I'll have to convey that to the selectmen, ask them to confirm it at their next meeting, maybe two weeks from today.
Holly made the motion, who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you pass...
Too late now.
You had your chance.
Now, how long can Bonnie stay as interim director?
Two months. I've been told to tell everyone.
Yes.
Up to three years, according to MBLC, but that, that would mean that the search committee isn't doing a job. And I don't mean, I just think that would be ridiculous.
That would be cruel and unusual punishment.
Or there's no qualified applicant, like waiting for, like the accountant.
Discussion in response to the proposed five-year plan. Do we have to vote on Bonnie, or did we?
We did.
Okay, sorry. Discussion in response to proposed five-year plan.
So some of you may have seen, there was an article a couple weeks back in the paper, kind of talking about the drafted five-year financial plan the town put together if the town's revenue doesn't pick up or improve. This was a months-long project that had been done to basically go through Massachusetts law and identify all of the required spending according to state law, kind of work backwards to try and construct a budget if no overrides or additional funds ever become available. Basically, what is the town legally required to provide in services? And that basically was the foundation of that document, and if you read through it, it does talk about the library and a couple other institutions in town, but it does say that, basically, it wouldn't actually save the town that much money to, you know, cut spending at the library, because so little of the library, one, budget is part of the town budget, and two, it just wouldn't make that much of a dent in the shortfalls that they are projecting for the town. So luckily, we're kind of protected because of the lack of money that we have. And then, basically, the statement in the document is, if the town decided to proceed with trying to, you know, have a nonprofit take over more responsibility, they'd have to look at the legality of it, which is how it kind of leaves it up in the air, with not really specifying what would happen, or how things could happen, or where we would go from there if the town budget did get really bad. As we've mentioned before, right now, the town, depending on the year, contributes normally between 70% to 80% of the library's budget, with the other 20% coming from donations, grants, or the trust funds.
And friends.
That's part of the donations, yes, and the friends, yeah. Most years, it's right around 75%, 25%, give or take.
Around 75%, 25%?
Give or take, in terms of 75% of what we, of our budget is from the town, and then the other 25% is from trust funds, grants, donations, the Friends fundraising, and all that good stuff.
So that report says that 75% isn't really enough to make a dent in any other service that the town provides?
More or less.
If they...
Well, basically, what they're saying is, the amount of money that the other town departments and/or the schools are short, if they cut the, you know, $330,000 that is our town budget right now, wouldn't actually make that much of a dent in the shortfalls that they're projecting for them over the next five years and longer, so...
Can I say that Dick Brewer, who's the current chair of the selectmen, is a very strong advocate for our library?
That's helpful.
And that's one of the things, it's, the way that it was worded in the paper was scary, but right now, we have the, this is the largest budget we've ever had from the town, and we have the most staff hours we have to work in the entire history of the library. There have been other times in the past where we had more staff, but most of them were only working two or three hours a week, so in terms of total hours of work right now, this is the largest staff we've ever had. So there's kind of like two different things going on. If things get bad, these are the numbers, but right now, we do have a very strong support at Town Hall for what we're offering.
And that, that's the 50 hours that you're referring to, right?
50, that's how many hours we're open to the public, hours worked is if you take all of the staff hours worked and add that together, so 40, 40, 40, 40, and then the part timers. So in terms of total hours per week worked by the entire staff, we've never had as much staff as we have right now.
So what is that total hour work? I thought you talked to everyone.
And part of that is us being open in the summer on Saturdays.
And, yeah. But it's also increase in usage, it's the, you know, the schools being next door, it's all the things that we're doing now, the tech help, the... all the things that we're doing now, the tech help, the assist people with devices, the people coming in and applying for jobs on the computers, which they've done for a while, but now that most of the bigger, higher companies require you to do online job applications, you know, pretty much anything can start with a four whatever, and if you're going over there for work, you have to apply online now. So there's, there's a lot of things that all pile together, and all the digital stuff.
I myself haven't had a chance to read the report yet, so I'm gonna read it over here, keep it open and discuss next month, next month.
Then we also, just so everyone knows, in that packet, I also included the full town administrator FY twenty-five budget, because basically, although our expenses are more or less level funded, which might be an issue next year, they didn't cut our budget in the town's budget, so they fully funded everything we asked for without restrictions or turnbacks.
That's pretty positive.
Yes, I have a feeling snowplow, we'll get through this year okay? We haven't had much, but yeah, still could be a problem next year, and the grass, the landscape.
Yeah.
Still up there. Proposal for lost or damaged book amnesty program.
So as of right now, because I know, I was asked to look into this, I don't know the total number of items that are outstanding, but the total value is nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and that goes back all the way to, I was a little concerned with the report, and I'm having the sales library network follow up on it, because they say we still have some stuff with outstanding bills from the last millennium, which I didn't think the bills lasted that long, but they say there is some stuff from the nineteenth that is outstanding, so we'll see on that. But the total value outstanding currently held on Westport items is nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
What does that mean?
So if you actually added together all the values of all the items that are lost and haven't been paid for in the Westport Public Libraries collection, it's a value of nine thousand nine hundred bucks.
Are your items insured?
No.
No?
No. So basically, depending on the value of the individual item, if a person has something that is worth more than ten dollars as a bill on their card, their card is locked, it cannot be used until that bill is paid, so it could be like a bunch of people with nine ninety-nine.
Do we know who owes money? You said their card gets locked, so you know whose card you lock, so that means they owe money?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
I don't have a list. Usually, hopefully, the families come in and talk to us when we take care of it, if they don't, then eventually the account gets deleted, so it could be freestanding bills that are just, kind of just drifting, but usually, most of the time, it gets taken care of when something like that happens, the card gets deleted after a while.
Does somebody expect this money to be paid?
Most of the time, it just kind of sits on the books, and then when people come in, we'll get them to take care of it or something like that, but the total value of all the lost items right now, that have not been paid for one way or the other, is nine thousand nine hundred bucks.
So is it multitudes of small items, or are there big items out there that are...
I don't know. The report that I got is just the total value per year, it doesn't have number of items. Most of the time, if it's a kid's book, it might only be like two or three bucks, so some people might just carry that on their account, because you don't have a requirement to pay.
That's a lot of books.
Yeah, that's a lot of books.
How much would you say you replace, let's say there's nine thousand dollars?
Depends on the item, I mean, some of the kids' books, the print books will wait, if somebody, you know, will snag something from the donation bin, most of the time, unless it's something that's ridiculously popular, we won't go out and repurchase a book, unless it's something that's really necessary for the collection.
Can you tell on a monthly basis how much that's increasing?
It's not, it's actually been going down for the last long time. So just as an example, I did pull the report, so as of right now, for the year, we've collected two hundred and sixty-two dollars in lost payments, last year for the total year was four thirteen.
Does that number concern you?
Not particularly.
So we had four thirteen, and we collected two sixty-two?
Two sixty-two, yeah.
So we, do we know who those people are that did not pay?
We don't track it that closely.
So how do you turn somebody's card off then?
It's an automatic process, so it's set up in the computer, so that the second somebody has outstanding finds or assessed finds worth ten dollars, their account insta-locks, and they cannot place holds, they cannot use the computers.
Do you get a notice when that happens?
No.
So somebody will come to check out a book?
And it's blocked on their end through the computer system, and they're also blocked at all libraries in the sales network, so they can't just walk into Fall River and use their card, it's locked everywhere until they take care of it.
But there's no fees anymore, so there's no...
Well, there is still for lost items, so something is checked out and never brought back, or if somebody checks out from another library.
It's not waived.
So if the town, if you all wanted to implement a one-time or recurring project to encourage, you know, attendance at the library by having some kind of amnesty program, that's certainly within the purview of the board, different libraries do it different way, I know Laura noticed that our friends in Worcester are doing a cat photo project. Which you could do that, Westport being Westport, I mean, you could take pictures of cows, I mean, you know, I'd like that personally, cool. Some towns have a, you know, food for finds program, where one week a month, if you bring in donations for the food bank, they'll take X amount off of any outstanding bills you have. I know some towns used to do that and then quit because it was making too much work for the staff, having to check whether or not the food items were past date, and in Bedford, I know they stopped doing that for that reason.
So you would have, to do that, you would have to know who owes money?
Well, people basically would have to come in with either their library card or their, you know, ID, we'd have to go into their account. I also would definitely recommend, if this was something the trustees want to pursue, we definitely would want to make sure it's Westport items only, because, you know, if you forgive a lost item from another town, they will get very upset, as I'm sure...
Can't send them with KFPs or something.
Boy, boy, no, with malasadig, that's a whole other thing.
But there'd have to be publicity if it was bring a picture of your cow and you'll get forgiven, so there'd have to be a way to get all that information out there to motivate people.
Between our, you know, social media or doing press releases, things like that, if the board wanted something like that, we could get it out there.
But you didn't have a list of names of who it was, so you could target them.
We could have a gallery show, you should be able to pull some kind of account.
I'm sorry?
If the accounts are locked, you should be able to pull some kind of...
Yeah, probably can, it was just what I was asked to pull was just how much money there was outstanding. If we needed to go in and pull, I mean, I'm not sure for privacy reasons whether or not they'd let me do it, because, you know, sometimes we do try and protect people's privacy like that, so I'm not sure if we could.
But if they owe money...
Maybe people could come with a picture of their cow and make a donation if they didn't have a debt.
We'll take that too, a cow fund.
What's your recommendation as to how it would affect the staff?
It's gonna be more work for the staff, I mean, anytime you do anything like that, it is, I mean, just bring in a picture, you know, get X amount of, you know, get one per, you know, one item forgiven, but then depends on the items. You know, back in the day, we'd have, you know, different values compared to what we have today, so.
So I would, I would imagine that most of the people who have a lost card don't come to the library.
No. It could be somebody who just actually has, you know, a partial payment, who still has like five or six bucks on their card, that they paid some of it off, just to get it below the usability, and are still carrying the other six bucks on there. Here, I had a friend of mine who lived in Dartmouth, who he always had his library card at nine dollars and ninety-nine cents of fines, so every time it tipped over, he would literally pay the exact, to the penny, to get it back down to nine ninety-nine. And he was always kind of felt proud of that, I'm not sure why, but...
When, when a patron comes to take a book out and they have a four-dollar balance, do you ask, do you, do you say, would you want to take care of your balance today?
That it's there.
Yeah.
Some people are like, oh, I'll take it next time, most people don't have cash anymore, a lot of people don't have checks. You can pay online through the sales catalog website with your credit card, but then there's like an eighty cent surcharge for the credit card processing, yada, yada, so it's one of those things that sometimes it just stays on there, and people just let it ride.
So are there people who like have lost a book that's thirty dollars or forty dollars, and they've got a big amount, and that's why they don't want to pay, or is it all tiny amounts?
Well, right now, it's, most of the time, it'll be something like that, somebody might check out a book or a couple books, and then, that's why a lot of libraries, they have a cap on overdue fines, to make sure that overdue fines don't get so high, I might as well just keep the books, it's not worth it returning, so that's why most libraries in sales have a two-dollar cap per item for overdue fines, back when we had overdue fines. But with lost items, it's kind of the same thing, so a lot of the times, you know, we'll try and figure out some way, once you return a lost item, the lost bill goes away, so that's the good thing about that, and that has helped increase the amount of items that we've gone back, that's why we're not getting as much in overdue fines, most of these from like, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago.
So do, can you note on that report, did you notice the ones more recently, or...
I could go pull it, I have a computer.
I don't want you to, you can...
The report that they sent me hasn't broken down by...
By a year, okay. Twenty years ago is, doesn't mean anything to us.
And there's a big batch that, there's a whole line that is literally from like nineteen hundred, so I'm assuming that's anything from before two thousand. So I had a question to sales, because I was told that you can't collect on fines or fees that are older than seven years, because somebody in one of the sales directors meetings had told us that that's a state law, that after seven years, it's not collectible by state regulations, so I don't know. So the current policy in sales is after seven years of a card expiring, a bill is supposed to get erased due to collectibility, so they're looking into that, but I'm not sure.
Sounds like a very lax issue.
That's the thing, a lot of libraries, it's kind of, they're not enthusiastic about bill collecting.
Well, you couldn't have repeat offenders, because if they owe thirty dollars, you can't come check out another book.
Unless they get another card for another family member.
Yeah, so they could use another family member's card then to check out, so you don't link the family members' cards.
We do not, no. Some towns do do that, but then it gets kind of slippery.
That's kind of dicey, because just family, not responsible for them.
Criminals know how to get around these things.
And that's the thing, I mean, there are some people who do take advantage of the system, I mean, we had a woman, when I worked in Dartmouth, that was actually known to multiple libraries, because she kept working her name around to get library cards at different towns, so she went into one library with her first name and her middle name as her last name, she went to another library with her last name as her first name, first name as her last name, she went to another library with her maiden name, she went to one library with her married name, she went to another library with her new other married name, so it was a whole thing.
But those are parts of person with an issue, but that's not...
Yeah, and that's the thing, so there are people who will always try and game the system, free isn't free enough for everyone.
I wonder how many times she votes.
It's above my pay grade, I'm not going there.
Anything we could look at, like currently, like let's look at the last year, angle at those type of people as opposed to thirty years ago?
Well, I think the idea of this was to try and create a program, like as an amnesty program, not a hunt and down.
Well, we could do that over like the last year or so.
I'm not sure, there probably would be a way to have a report generated with everyone who has lost items from the last year, but we'd have to go through sales, that's not something we have access to in-house.
I would think right now, when I check out books, it says on the bottom, you know, this is worth seventy-nine dollars, so if I didn't bring it back, then my ten dollars is up.
Yeah.
You mean you come back and pay your ten dollars, still lost?
Yeah, and that's the thing, so ever since we went to the automatic renewal, lost bills have gone down, just because people were bringing stuff back, and there's less of an incentive to need to keep it out longer, so that's part of the reason the entire lost and find and overdue model has completely been upended since we went to that program. So it's, a lot of ways, it's a lot better, because we're getting stuff back more often, so that's been better.
So I would say you don't see it as an issue, that number doesn't, does not concern you too too much, that's not a number that really could be found again, because a lot of it's beyond that seven year to be on the safe side, and that back in time, beyond time for some of that money.
Yeah, I mean, we've already collected, you know, more than half of what we took in for all of last year in lost items, so, you know, if the trustees wanted to do something for find forgiveness for lost items...
I would just ask them to bring it in, don't even do anything, just, hey, how about bringing your books back? You don't have to give them anything, you don't have to produce any more work for anybody, just get a book.
Now, do they get a, like, we get a notice for renewal, do they get a notice, so they do, so they know?
So they get emails and let bills mailed to the house.
Oh.
Monthly?
When, at the time of the item.
So...
It's not recurring, and so when the item becomes lost, there's a bill that gets sent.
It's a one-shot deal.
Once?
Yep.
So that could be as old as seven years, that message to them. Like, can you, can you imagine like having a book and just saying, oh, they reminded me I lost it, and then you never remind it again?
Well, if they come into the library to check out an item, then they are reminded, because then the block comes back in. So at that point, basically, if that doesn't come up, that means they haven't come back to any library in Southern Massachusetts.
Right.
Or they jump the state. I had that happen in New Bedford, that broke my heart, we had a family that, they were moving to Kentucky, and they came into the library, and they was a mom and two sons, and they literally checked out ten DVDs each, and took them with them to Kentucky.
Oh.
They were daily library users, and then they did that, it was terrible.
Desperate.
Yeah.
Okay, old business.
So we're just gonna put it on the back burner, okay.
Yeah, I think it's something we should look at, I don't know if it's a, like a year, yearly thing, look at it, like kind of George did with that.
Take it up at another time.
Yeah.
And let me know, because I don't come back and start taking pictures of cows all around town, just for personal interpretation.
Old business, I have finally got a price for the ADA walkway down to the amphitheater, it's two prices, one is completely concrete all the way down, and the other one is using bluestone, the concrete one is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, the bluestone one is forty-nine thousand thirty-four dollars.
Oh, what's that?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Forty-six.
That's bluestone.
And would the concrete be more stable, or boost or moves?
The bluestone's pretty good, Joe, it's...
It does move, that's its point.
Well, they'll have to put, like, you know, they'll have to prepare the ground, put a bed down.
The ground's all gonna be concrete footing, no matter which way you go, you have a footing, and then you'll have the concrete on top pad, or you'll have the bluestone on top of that, so you should not get like frost heat with it. And it's gonna be flush enough, you can just drive right over it, you got your grass the same way we do now. It's basically the same design that he, that guy Woody drew up, and Woody and, can't think of his name, Scott, came out here and did a lot of work together, they hooked up with Lee's Landscaping to do that kind of, the groundwork for them, I didn't bring it with me, so I guess we'll put a letter, a letter together for Mr. Van, I'd like to wait, if we could, to get the door, a security door on it too, so we have two items that we want to upgrade. And I'll try to get the security stuff done, so we can get these guys in and do what they have.
Yeah, that would be good, to put it all in one, rather than break it down twice.
Kind of like a safety type of thing for there, and a safety thing for the library.
I forget what their, what time of year it is that they make decisions, or maybe they do all the time.
They do all the time. All he does is call that lady at the bank in New York, she handles the rest.
Jackie.
Yep, Jackie, great. Other topics, not anticipated, you got anything?
I have a question, what's gonna happen with the book club on Monday nights?
I have talked to a few select secret individuals who have been delegated, kind of to keep the conversation going, so there's a couple of people who will try and basically collaborate to make sure the discussions of the different books keep going, Bonnie and me are gonna work on picking the books going forward, we already have all of the rest of this year's books picked through December, and then I have one secret individual who I have individually deputized to keep the conversation from getting political, so if it starts going that way, there is one secret individual who, I'm sure Polly knows who it is, who is a very strong-minded individual, will make sure to keep things focused and on task.
Okay.
You know who I mean.
I did have one thing, Bonnie, you did have a paper.
I don't know who's in the book club.
Yeah, I just didn't have to think that out.
But someone you know.
I don't know what it's going to be.
I went to a book club twice.
I went to the book club twice and I know.
So that particular person is in charge of making sure that the conversation doesn't go afield of anywhere it should be going for pulling conversation.
And she will.
She will.
Airdate, a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
I second.
On paper?
Aye, aye.